All right, being Thursday, January 7th at 7:00 PM, I call the meeting of the Board Planning Board to order. All items up within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and/or votes. Anybody recording it? Acknowledged to the chair. Don't see anybody. All right, first item on the agenda are the meeting minutes. And I'd like to do the 2021 ones first.
Why are we doing them now?
Mr. Chairman, February 25th, 2021 appears completely accurate. I move it be accepted.
Well, the problem is, you can't on that one mess.
Because you're...
Because you weren't here.
You weren't on the board.
You weren't on the board then.
No, no, he was.
Yes, I was.
But he was not here.
Yeah, you were absent.
According to the minutes.
I wasn't either.
No, there's only three of us here, I think.
I was not here, so...
Well, I was here, so...
There's a little error in one or two of these where it has present William Grant. William Grant resigned in 2020, 2019, and I took his place. So, I didn't bother. It has me correct in the voting.
Okay.
But in the present, there are a couple of these that have William Grant as present.
William Grant out and insert Dave O'Connor.
So, motion stands.
Do you go by, sir?
Must look like a potted plant.
With that one change?
Yes.
Okay.
On that one?
Yeah. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing, none? Chris?
Abstaining.
Yes.
Yes. And everybody else is abstaining?
I'm not.
No, Liz. We got Liz. Okay.
There's Lynn.
Pardon?
There's a big change on the board then.
Oh, Jane, there's Jane. Thank you, thank you, Jane.
Rio.
Yep. So, that one's done. Let's go to May 27th.
No. I wasn't on the board.
No. No.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the draft be approved as written.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as written? Seeing, none? Doc?
Yes.
Abstain?
Abstain. Yes, Liz?
Yes.
Jane?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Adopted. Minutes of June 24th.
Mr. Chairman, these appear to be correct, and I move that we accept them as written.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to approve from the board? The audience seeing, hearing, none? Liz?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm abstaining. I was not here.
All right. Now, let's get to the more current ones here. However you guys want to handle these, if you want to do all... Let's do one at a time. October 26th.
I move that we accept the October 26th minutes as presented.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes as written from the board? From the audience? Seeing and hearing, none? Start in the corner. Jane? John? Yes.
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 Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. November 9th.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes be approved as drafted.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to approve from the board? The audience seeing, hearing, none? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion looking for the minutes of December 14th.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from December 14th, 2023, as presented.
Motion to approve. Motion made in second. Any further discussion from the board? From the audience? Seeing, hearing, none? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the enforcement of Ocean Pines Development Wildwood Lane, continued from 12/14/23. First on that is the updated stormwater report for Lot 61. Staff have a comment?
Yes, we received that report.
And is there any...
Then I forwarded it to the board.
Yep. I didn't know if you would like to have peer review look at it?
I would recommend a peer review of the report.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Chris?
I went over this report and had some concerns. Is there anybody from existing grade here? Is there anybody from Ocean Pines attorneys here?
Yes, I represent the owner of Lot 61, David Udi.
Okay.
Yep.
On the existing grade report, I'm a little concerned. I've seen a lot of these done before, and even noted in here, he notes that he's using a CAD software solution program in doing this. That would be troubling enough, just to think that it's a cut and paste. But then when you go through it, and it's at pretty close to the end of the report, and it comes under "Construction Period Pollution Prevention Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan," on about third page in. It cites that the barriers should be removed when they have served their usefulness, but not before all upslope areas have been permanently stabilized and permission to remove the barriers have been approved by the Town of Auburn Conservation Commission. I don't think they have any control in the town. So, that leads me to say that I doubt this whole project, this whole paper, wasn't a bunch of cut and paste to fit into this particular project, because obviously, they missed that one.
Well, I've reviewed many of those reports before, and sometimes there are typos in those reports, sometimes language in those reports.
That's not a cut and... That's a cut and paste. They cut and pasted it, and they missed it.
That's fair. What I would say is, it's a stamped plan by an engineer, and if this board is so inclined, retain a peer review engineer and have it peer reviewed. My understanding of the engineering analysis is that it states there, and it's done, again, it's the engineer's stamp on that plan.
It's an engineer's stamp, and that's his reputation, his stamp that he's putting up there. And I do believe that this was, this entire plan was probably a cut and paste to do it on the cheap.
And I...
So, I'm going to recommend that we do do a peer review. The cost is borne by the developer in this particular project, and that we pick the particular engineering firm that does that, because I don't believe anything in this. Once you find a mistake like that once, they didn't review it properly.
That's very standard language, I would say.
I understand that.
At the end of the report, to remove the barriers.
And I understand a lot of, a lot of the reports are strictly that, because we've seen this before. I've been doing this for 20 years.
Right.
It's a lot of cut and paste on a lot of different projects. They try to cut corners.
But that's not...
I don't believe that this existing grade actually went out to that particular project and did any of this. I think they cut and pasted a lot of it just to cover the developers' butt.
May I respond?
You may.
So, my response is, the language that you cite is very standard language that appears in these reports about removing sediment barriers at the conclusion of the project.
Right.
That is not part of the stormwater analysis for the project that's done by the engineer. So, I hear what you're saying, with great respect to you, it's a concern that you're articulating that is not based on anything from an engineer, so let's get to the bottom of it. If you have a concern about it, then we are completely on board with the retention of a peer review engineer to look at the engineering analysis in this report. But I don't think it's a good use of time to say that the report, because of that typo, I mean, no disrespect, your planning board minutes just had someone on it that was no longer on the board anymore.
Exactly, and I understand that.
And it's a typo. That happens sometimes.
That's a typo. Having Auburn deal in there, that's not a typo. That was an existing on a piece of paper that was copied and put into this report.
Because that language is very standard, this report about the timing of removing sediment barriers.
And I understand that. That's not like a typo here where we missed somebody's name or the wrong person in. That's a typo. This is cut and paste. This whole report is probably a cut and paste. So, I'm going to recommend peer review.
Yeah.
And...
I think peer review, I think is appropriate.
We don't have objections to that, but we do take issue with categorizing the report entirely as a cut and paste job. Respectfully to you, sir, there's no basis to say that.
No, no. I understand, I understand. So, any other comment or question from the board?
Yes, sir.
Doc?
On the very last page of the report, in the appendix, there was a Lot 61 post-development drain map with grades, catch basins, and so on. And by the date, that's a week ago, I believe we should be able to rely on it. Conceptually, it has the parking lot serving Lot 61 with a paved swale in the middle. And Counsel, could you take a look at these? And maybe, Mr. Murphy, could you just take a look at one of them, just for your possession? Let me spread those around. On the second page, the area with the dashed circle is what the photo on the second page refers to. I don't think you need to survey it or see that there's no crease in that pavement. So, if you look very carefully at the drawing between the yellow arrows, there are little rivulets of irrigation water that are coming from the lawns of 5B, 5C, 5D, and they're passing across the parking lot and out onto Wildwood Lane. So, that's not an insignificant area that... What I'm getting at is, it doesn't appear to be built the way it was designed. That's an important point. That goes to credibility. So, I'm, I think in addition to peer review, I'd love to see as builts. When I took this photo in October, I think the lower parking lot had not yet been installed. It's not the subject of this meeting tonight, but I've seen this again and again in Phase 1, where significant portions of unit clusters, the parking lots serving them, unload their stormwater load onto Wildwood Lane. And I don't think that's the point of the, at least, the Lot 61 post-development drain map. It's not controlling the stormwater the way it's designed.
What I would suggest is, any concern that the board has about this report and the stormwater issues, to flag those for the peer reviewer and say, when you go out on site, looking through the lens of this report and the data on site, please address these questions that we have. And that's the point, I think, of having your own independent expert to advise you to do that. And we're happy to engage in that process and do that.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I just wanted...
Let's get the answers to your questions.
Right. Any other question?
I was, just for the record, I was out there twice this week. Once I went out there right after the snowstorm, and then, most recently, just the other day, because I wanted to be there when the rain was coming down. As you know, we had a pretty significant rain, and I wanted to make my own observations. I was there at 6:30 in the morning. And I actually met one of the residents there, and I met Mr. Hebb there also. Just, we bumped into each other. But I made some observations at the time, and one of them was on Wildwood Lane, and I think this can be probably corrected with the final top coat of asphalt. And that is, across from 6B, the road seems to slope a little bit to the east, because I could see sand and everything crossing over. If that is pitched properly, crowned properly when they asphalt it, that'll direct all that water into the last catch basin before it goes out to Ocean Pines Drive. Other than that, I thought almost all the other catch basins and everything that I observed up there for the board's edification seemed to be doing their job, other than, as Doc just pointed out, that particular parking lot. It's just coming straight out into the road. And the one across the street, I think it was 12, which is on the corner of Ocean Pines and Wildwood, that's about where you start to see that sediment. But their parking lot, everything's contained on site, which is where it's supposed to be. So, I think if they get the right asphalt company in there and they change that catch a little bit, anything that comes out of any of the parking lots, as Doc pointed out, will be run off to the gutter and then be caught into the catch basins. But in general, we don't like to see it come out into the roadway to begin with, and I think that's what Doc was alluding to.
Understood. Thank you.
But other than that, you know, there's still some issues up there, but we also have to understand that a lot of construction is still going on up there. We don't see the final result until the final nail's put into the coffin, so to speak.
Yeah, and it's hopefully your peer review will confirm that the purpose of this management plan, when it's enacted, when it's completed, according to the data in this plan, no stormwater, all the stormwater will be completely contained on this site when this is done, according to this plan. I understand you have concerns about that, so please retain a peer review engineer to interface with our engineer, but that's the goal of this plan, that every single bit of stormwater will be contained on site.
Yeah, I have one other question or comment, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
The last couple of pages of post-construction stormwater operations and maintenance plan, it says, "Upon completion of construction, the operation and the maintenance of all components of the stormwater management will be the responsibility of the owner." And I would trust that that's the condominium association. I think we should have some sort of language in that conclusion that we have some say in that also, because he could strike the last nail into the last board in there. Is that the end of construction, or is the end of construction, you know, 30 days afterwards? I think we need to look at everything after everything's completed, after the top coats have been done, before we release it, and before then it's turned over to the condominium association, because things change. Sediment changes, there's all kinds of different things, so...
Okay.
I would like your client to have that put into that post-construction plan, that it's also, the planning board has a sign off on that also.
Town of Born.
Town of Born.
I would ask that, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, if Ms. Copeland could just... She had my email. If you could just communicate to me about...
Have her confer with town council, we'll send some language over to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board members, from the audience? Lower yours.
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Rand. I live at 9B Wildwood Lane, and I'm a member of the Ocean Pines Condominium Association's Board of Trustees. The engineer that we have hired and has made a presentation to the board, it was several months ago now, he was able to take a quick look at the existing grade report that was submitted, and this afternoon, very quickly, was able to dash off a few preliminary observations about the report. Some of them were sort of echoed by Mr. Farrell, I believe, and Mr. O'Connor. He also gave this assessment to Ms. Copeland. He emailed it to her this evening. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but...
I have not.
So, you have it. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that he said. He pointed to a few holes in the report, having to do with, it's not clear if a notice of intent was filed with the EPA. He brought up some problems, possible problems with pre-treatment requirements, some inconsistencies regarding the number of chambers in the recharging system. And then, finally, his last point here was something that I observed, and Mr. Leclair, one of our neighbors down on Alpine Circle, he also noted this on Tuesday night. Actually, I was out there Tuesday night during the rainstorm. Tom told me he was out there hours later. Both of us shot videos, unbeknownst to each other, of different sides of Wildwood Lane showing the runoff on Wildwood Lane bypassing the catch basins there on Wildwood Lane, and the water going right down into Ocean Pines Drive. And that's highlighted in the observations from our engineer also that was sent to Ms. Copeland this afternoon. So, I just wanted to point those out to you. And during the previous discussion, there was some mention about red flags being brought up for the peer review, and I would recommend that these red flags that our engineer pointed out to Ms. Copeland also be taken into account by the peer review when that is done. Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Basically, what I was talking about.
Right. Any other question or comments from the board?
I'd like to speak.
Hi, Tom Leclair, 7 Alpine Circle. Yes, I was out there for the majority of the night, from 1:30 in the morning, actually 1:22 in the morning, to 6:30 in the morning, videoing and just taking pictures and monitoring the water runoff from Wildwood Lane and Ocean Pines. First of all, I would like to make a mention that they put a lot of temporary fixes in at Ocean Pines to divert the water from Lot 61, which is now the main topic, but unfortunately, I think the pre-existing topic should be brought back into play too, as far as the stormwater runoff from Ocean Pines. They put in a big pump, a big pipe. I'm not sure if any of you have seen it, but they put a couple dams to block that water right next to that big dirt mound by the trailer, and that water now steers right into that dirt foundation, which I would like to think would be a permanent solution for a detention pond at Ocean Pines, instead of throwing up two or three other condominiums up there. That would save a lot of problems. They've also removed all the silt sacks out of the road on Ocean, on Wildwood Lane, which allows for anywhere from a four-foot to six-foot stream of water coming down that water, that whole road. That night, I videoed on the, if you're facing Ocean Pines off of Wildwood, I videoed a six-foot wide stream of water coming down the left-hand side of the road, and then I videoed a four-foot wide section of water coming down on the right-hand side, and that wasn't at the bottom of the street. That was before, I don't even know the numbers that well, but they were basically going past every basin on that road. You know, so what, they're all saying, as far as they're not at fault for anything, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I don't want to use the word victim, but I'm the one at the bottom of the hill. My in-laws, every time we get a rainstorm, we don't sleep at night anymore. That's why I was up all night. My wife wasn't sleeping. My in-laws packed the bag just in case they had to evacuate. I'm sorry, this is ridiculous. You know, this gentleman here, Mr., I don't even know his last name, he's sitting there pushing for these guys to keep going forward, yet the negligence that they're providing, this whole build with, is just absurd. You know, the water just storming is crazy. So, I really hope you take that into consideration.
Well, thank you. Anybody else? My eyes.
Hi, John Bailey, 11A Wildwood. And I apologize, I just want clarification. The peer review and the report we're talking about, is it only for Lot 61, or is it for the entire site drainage issues?
Lot 61.
It's the entire site, because in the existing grade project they talk about, it says 61 on the front, but they, in the report, they go over basically the whole street.
Okay.
So, I'd have them look at, we'll have the peer review look at it, but they talk about basically all of Wildwood.
Okay. And I just, I don't know if it's on record or not, I don't want to get into too much of my own issues, but the grading at my unit is basically flat, and in these rainstorms, I get two or three inches of water coming up right onto the foundation, so...
And your dress is?
11A Wildwood. I mean, it might be there's nothing that can be done, I don't know, but if that could be part of what gets looked at, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing?
Quickly, Mr. Leclair and I have a previous employment experience where we worked together, so I don't know if that's going to influence us at all, but Mr. Leclair was, did have a pump set up in his yard. But the only thing that I would say is, Tom, you're pumping water out of your backyard, well, that's where the hose was going.
The hose was going into my backyard, behind my shed.
Okay, behind your shed. But where you were pumping was out onto an open space, and that's against bylaw, so you can't pump it there. So, if you have to pump it again, I would suggest that you pump it into the catch basins that you've installed in your own driveway.
My catch basins can't keep those, they're full.
Well, then, I don't know what... You're, Tom, you're at the bottom of the belly. You have slope up to Route 3A behind you, up to the left, up to the right, and up to the street. You have to expect that you're going to get some water down there. It may be from some of this, but naturally, you're going to get water in that, because you are at the bottom of the belly.
Can I get a speaker?
Sure.
Yeah. The water that I'm experiencing is coming down from Ocean Pines Drive. Yes, I happen to live at the bottom of the hill, and yes, I had pumped the water out behind my shed. That was the lowest point of the area that I felt that was necessary for the water to go without flooding my house. I don't have any other place to put it. Now, speaking with a couple engineers and excavators that happen to be friends of mine, they happened to look at the two basins in my street, the one right at the very foot of my driveway, and the one at the end of my driveway, and said, "That's exactly what they are. They are just like big buckets." They don't have any form of retention whatsoever, or detention, and, for that matter, infiltration. So, I guess my question to the town then would be, I know it's a private road, but I think Lake Howard was also a private road. And the town went through and put in some type of drainage system in Lake, at Howard Road, on the other side of the bridge, because they were flooding for years, as we are now too, with the assistance from the, mostly from Ocean Pines Construction. I don't know, I would like to think that maybe the town could take into consideration and take those two basins in the road at the base of Alpine Circle and convert them into some type of dry well, so to speak, where they can put dry tanks in there with perforated openings that can put rock all around it and allow the water to seep out like I did in my yard. I've got two tanks in there that have the capacity to absorb or take on over 3,000 gallons of water. And I also have rock going around them also that'll leach out through the property. Again, when I'm taking the water from Ocean Pines onto my property, I don't have any place to put it. Now, I have a little, it looks like a culvert to the right of my house, but that fills up fast. It also leaches out as quickly as it can, but I don't have the abilities to move this water in any other direction. That's why I'm asking for this to happen. You know, I understand that what I can't do, I can't do, but what can I do then? That's my question to the town and the planning board. What can I do to save my investment in my house and protect my family?
We're looking at the stormwater to make sure that it all works, and if there's any improvements, to try to limit the amount of water exposure coming off of Wildwood onto Ocean Pine, and then down into your property.
I don't know what more information and what more documentation everybody needs. It's happening. You see it happening. I've submitted video footage of the whole thing, pictures. I have neighbors acknowledging it. I got everybody that talks about this, about, even the condominiums are talking about it, about them flooding their own places and watching the water spill down the roads. I don't understand where you're saying that this isn't happening, or we're looking into it. Time is really of the essence.
I'm not saying it's not happening. Nobody here is saying it's not happening.
Time is of the essence. We have another storm coming tomorrow night.
We understand that.
And I'm going to be up all night again. I'm going to have my in-laws pack another bag just in case they get flooded out, just because we have to keep looking into this and looking into this. I think there should be some action taken now. You know, these temporary things that the Hebb builders had put into play to submit and to recess this water, keep this water from pouring in, is helpful, yes, but it's not permanent. The minute they put more asphalt in there and they put more rooftops up there, I'm sorry, it's not going to change, it's not going to change the formula. It's going to still come down stockhauled, it's going to come down even harder than it does now. And they're saying they're going to have all these detention systems? All right, prove it. Prove it. That report alone, I picked up on what Mr. Farrell said about the Town of Auburn coming in, and the fact that it's all just very fancy-looking graphs. The last report they submitted was taken on a sunny day, and there was no rain seven days prior.[1785.51] rain seven days prior.
That's why we're having a peer review, to study, and an engineer to look at it on behalf of the town.
Okay, I appreciate that, but again, time is of the essence. You know, we weren't really experiencing flooding of any kind last year in the winter, but we always feel it from August through October. Usually it slows down, well, it hasn't slowed down now. And I think now we need to make it happen. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anybody else? I'd entertain a motion for peer review.
So moved.
You'd want the planning board to have peer review at the cost of the developer, correct?
Correct.
And then?
Do you want me to be more specific?
And to have the staff pick the peer review? Correct? Okay.
That would be.
That's what I meant.
Okay, that's, that's okay. Do I have a second?
I apologize for my sparse.
Sorry, just discussion on that motion.
Okay, second it, and we'll discuss it.
Second.
Yep.
I'd like to see as built that could feed in the peer review. We've got a design here, and the question is, is it being included?
Well, well, that question will, will put in as part of the, one of the questions we have, and see, and see what the peer review comes back with. Fair enough?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see the as built match the design drawing.
Right, oh, I understand that.
If they don't, that's, how shall we say, is that actionable?
We'll have our peer review look at that.
Fine.
One second. I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion from the board? From the audience?
Yeah, sorry.
Come on, come on, party.
Neil Coleman, 6 Wildwood Lane.
I also have a lot of water in my backyard all the time. What is the timeline on this peer review?
As quick as we can get it done.
What does that mean?
As quick as we can get it done.
In other words, you're going to call someone tomorrow?
We'll start working on it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
Right, start working on it, yeah, yeah.
So through, through Ms. Copeland's office?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, I'm not committing to tomorrow.
Right.
But, you know, I have other projects that we're working on, but.
But we also have problems, too.
As soon as we can.
No, we understand it.
Problems, as you can hear, and it's just.
We, we will, we will not put it on the backboard, we'll get it done as soon as we can.
Just wanted for the record.
Yep, not a problem. Any other que, somebody else had a question? We're good? So there's a motion made, seconded, no further discussion from the board?
From the audience? Motion.
Stay in.
Yes.
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 Jane?
Yes.
Yes, passes, thank you. Next on the agenda would be the roadway finishing in asphalt top coat bond.
Yeah, so David, you did again, but on behalf of the owner of Lot 61, so my understanding is the town received information that the bond, the suggested amount of the bond should be 60,000. We're fine with that, and I think we've already made arrangements to transmit that, the delta between what the town is already holding in a cash bond, I think you're already holding 38,000, so we'll happily make up the delta and, and provide that to the town.
Okay. Any questions from the board? From the audience?
Hi, again, Robert Rand from Wildwood Lane. Regarding the top coat bond, I know that our attorneys who appeared before you would be, would have been interested in commenting on this if they had known that it was going to be on the agenda. Apparently this was a late addition to the agenda, Ms. Copeland said that it was added on Monday. And I'm just wondering, is it standard operating procedure for you to add agenda items without notifying abutting landowners that there are issues that are coming up at the planning board meeting that would deeply affect them? Is that par for the course?
It's a 48-hour posting requirement for agendas, so the agenda can be amended 48 hours before the public hearing.
Without notifying abutting landowners?
This isn't, yes, this is not a hearing, that's, just to be clear.
Uh-huh.
Right, so there is no abutter notification required.
No abutter notification required.
And the, the quotes were also given back a few months ago, so everybody had the quotes from the, the top coat.
And you have the quotes that the association received also?
I do.
Good.
I do.
Thank you. So how will this be determined as to what the bond should be, since you have various quotes that are pretty, pretty different in, in a, by at least, you know, six figures from each other?
The town, department heads, looked at it?
No, no. I, you want me to speak to it?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So the quote that was provided for the roadway, provided by the applicant, was $53,000. DPW director and our engineering department went out there and they verified the figures, and they came up with an estimate of $60,000.
I see.
Right, that the, the quote that was provided by the trust also included every single driveway, which was around 120,000, I believe.
Okay.
Right, but I, it's my understanding, and maybe you can confirm that, that the lots were turned over to the trust? Is that, I don't know. Want to speak to that?
Thank you.
That's correct, that's condominium property and the, and the.
Right.
These bonds are for roadways, that's what the, the customer practice is, we don't provide bonds for driveways that are owned by private homeowners. So that's what they own, that's part of their common area, so the bond is for the roadway. Like multiple experts have confirmed that this is the cost of it, and we're happy to up the bond to that amount.
Thank you. Yes.
So when are they going to finish the parking lots for the condo people? For the condo association? There's no top coat on, they've shown pictures of steps, shut offs, tripping hazards, areas that catch water and whatnot, that have not been completed. It needs to be addressed, I think, for the people, and nobody has talked about that. There's, there's, I, I, I guess I'm having a problem, the question would be, how can you issue a occupancy permit when all the work hasn't been completed? That seems to be the issue, isn't it? With the driveways for the parking lots and, and the condo people at the association? Parking lots were never completed, but people are living there, under duress. Why was an occupancy permit issued? No answers?
Some of, some of the parking lots, I believe, are finished.
Twelve is.
And twelve is. And I think a couple more on that particular side of the road are finished, but it's, when we go on to the east side of the road, which is six back through two or three, that, I don't think that top coat has been finished.
Ken Murphy, building commissioner, Town of Born. As far as occupancy permits, between planning and building, they're two separate things, unfortunately. So I know even times when you, I issue an occupancy permit for a house that's under construction, they don't have the grass or the land taken care of, we still issue an occupancy permit, because again, we're dealing with two different things, planning and building. With that, you know, I try to rely on the planning board to say if the, the job's complete, but which is not, so that's, it's a tough situation when you have, you know, a group being built here and another section being built, and then, yes, it should be a complete top coat, but it's hard to put the top coat in when it could be destroyed and then done over again. It's a, you know, I understand your frustration, yes, there are pockets here and there that should be taken care of by the Hebs at the time, but obviously that would be most likely double the cost to take care of it and then have to come back again.
This is an active construction zone, so.
Yeah, that's the top.
You're going to have to expect it, some things aren't going to be finished.
Right.
It's not active where the people are living.
And.
I would beg to differ.
He's walked away from it, he, he's off that.
Which makes sense, right, in regards, yes, there are sections that, I've been getting emails for the last year looking for top coats in certain areas, and, but would still on an active construction site. You know, I can see why they could take care of the parking lots right now and not do the main road, but, you know, that'd have to be discussion based through the planning board, if you guys like that done soon as possible and work with the Hebs, and see about that, you know, if that's taken care of, you know, now. But I think where the peer reviewer will come in and provide us some information and say, listen, this makes sense for here, or, or wait for another time to do it.
Come on. Do we have a, our attorneys have a copy of that DPW assessment? That's a no?
It's an email.
To our attorneys? I mean, it seems like Mr. Heb's attorney has a copy, we don't have a copy, do we? Of the DPW assessment for the 60,000?
It was an email.
To our attorneys?
I did not send it to your Ocean Pine Trust.
To our, why?
I, I'm happy to send it tomorrow.
The why haven't, if Mr. Heb has it, why doesn't our side have it?
I, I haven't, I haven't issued it.
It's not an answer.
To the trust yet. I mean, it's an email, it's not, it's not a breakdown of any itemized list of anything, it's the DPW director confirming the price.
Did Mr. Heb's lawyer get a copy of that?
I do not know. I don't, I don't think.
He didn't have anything, so, for the record.
Right, for the record.
So that's going to go out to our, our attorney also, and the association?
I mean, yeah, if you want to, right.
Yeah, of course we want.
Sure, I'm happy to forward it.
And, and out, so everybody knows what's going on. Thank you.
I'm happy to forward that.
Thank you.
So I think, I think this is the fourth meeting that we've had over this topic, and multiple times, Mr. Heb's attorney and Mr. Heb has contended that he has nothing to do with Ocean, Ocean Pines condominium development, he's gone so far as to section off Lot 61 where the construction is taking place, to develop a new condominium association and a new condominium development. I don't know how anyone can say that there's still construction going on on all those other buildings on Ocean Pines Drive, I mean, excuse me, on Wildwood Lane. He's walked away. He's totally disassociating himself from what's going on there. I, I just don't understand it. The attorney for Mr. Heb, very much, in the first meeting and the second meeting, said, "That's not our problem anymore."
While I'm up here. So I couldn't help but notice that I've been attending the meetings regarding more about issues that I think there are with the site plan. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, I'm wondering if anyone can tell me where that stands?
This is under code enforcement, that's what we're looking at right now.
All right, so bringing that up, I did, I filed a complaint on December 12th. As of yesterday, I hadn't had a response about it. I went to Town Hall, the building inspector wasn't in, spoke with Ms. Copeland. She explained some things to me. Couldn't understand, because clearly in the zoning book, it says that a response should be had within 14 days, 30 days have gone by. When I spoke to the building inspector today.
Excuse me, excuse me, is this related to the roadway finishing in asphalt coat top bond?
So I'm not going to get an answer as to when we're going to discuss the site plan again?
We only discuss what's on the agenda, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Is there a public comment portion of this, that I can?
Unfortunately.
Later on?
No.
Unfortunately, by state law, we have to go by that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sweep it under the carpet.
Careful. Any questions or comments from any other members on the roadway finishing in asphalt coat top bond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chris?
I would suggest that the stormwater peer review be wait, be delayed until the finishing of Lot 61, those developments and stuff. The reason I'm saying that is because if we review the stormwater review now, based on the existing conditions, and those are going to change when they start to build three more buildings on Lot 61, we could have a lot more change in stormwater. So I don't, I don't know what the proper procedure for that would be, but.
I'm under the understanding that the engineer would be looking at the full build-out for Lot 61 as well.
I understand that, but until.
Because we also have.
Roofing office controls.
But we also have water issues publicly stated here, what, three residents have mentioned it today?
Yeah.
So I don't want a delay on their behalf.
And I understand that.
But I think we can bring in concerns that you bring up, is to make sure that the complete build-out is met, and if there's any changes, we have to, they'd have to be addressed.
As long, as long as we have a procedure in place to look at the whole project at completion, before it's turned over by the Hebs, and I forgot the LLC on this.
I get it.
To Ocean Pines LLC.
Mr. Farrell's point, one of the things that will mitigate, I, I, my understanding is, and this is to your earlier points today, once the top coat is put on Wildwood Lane, that will, that will direct water to these catch basins. So what's delaying putting the top coat there is the delay in construction, because you can't finish the road until the, running this heavy machinery over the road, you can't, cannot finish the road until the construction is done. So if we can complete construction and put the top coat on that road, my understanding is that will alleviate, I think, many of the issues, if not all that we're talking.
I think it'll alleviate some, I'm not saying all, I'm saying is.
But I'm saying your point is what I'll take.
Until the whole project is done, I don't think we can look at all the road runoff and those issues, even if we put the top coat on at the end. And that's why I'm asking that the planning board have some say before this is all turned over to the condominium association, because we want to make sure everything's in place first.
And, and I think the, our peer review will take all that into account, and again, I know there's three of, three families here that are talking about stormwater coming into it, and I, and I told them, I'm not going to delay it, so I don't want to delay it at all.
Tom Leclerc, Seven Alpine Circle.
I'm just, I'm just, comments here, and then I'll, I'll open it back up.
Yep.
Give me a second, any other comments from the board right now?
As long as we have a mechanism.
Doc, one comment is, as part of the peer review, I'd advocate for doing it sooner rather than later, I would like to hear an engineer's considered opinions that we can solve the considerable problems on water missing the catch basins on Wildwood Lane with a top coat.
Right.
It may take more than that, it may take lowering the basins, it may take shaping the, the subgrade, I'd love to hear that.
Right. Any other questions, comments from board? The floor is yours.
I, I appreciate Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Farrell's comments about the peer review, but I, I think that the sooner they act on the peer review, the better. The only reason, the peer review I would like to see forth is not necessarily for Lot 61, I would like to see it for the preliminary drainage problem we've had, because that's the problem that we're having right now. They have that temporary fix going into Lot 61. They removed all the silt sacks off of Wildwood Lane to steer the, to allow the water to flow freely. That's why the detention pond didn't fill up this last time. You know, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I'm also pretty common sense-wise. You know, if you take something away from something that's going to steer into a basin, it's going to flow right past it. You know, this, this doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out. And, and, you know, I, I would really appreciate if the peer review would definitely focus on the pre-existing problems that we've had, because this isn't just something that sparked them, this has been going on since 2021. And this is my fourth flood since September 10th, and if they, if, if they didn't do what they did for that little temporary measure they did, I would have be, we wouldn't be talking that I wouldn't be flooded again right now.
Right.
And again, please, take the action, and, and don't let them continue to put foundations in the ground right now, make them do the whole project and fix the problems before they move forward. The, the foundation they have there right now is a detention pond, because they have a pipe leading right into it.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, to accept a 60,000 bond posted with the town?
Make a motion, and we approve that.
A second.
And that's a 60 plus 10?
That, that includes, I think it's a 30%.
It's 30%.
30%.
That includes a 30%?
On top of 38 we already have.
Yes.
Then I'm good with that, I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve. 60, seconded by Doc?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion from the board? From the audience? Say none, requires a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you right on.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the enforcement of special permit zero five twenty twenty-one for one forty-eight MacArthur Boulevard, map twenty-seven point zero, parcel eighty-two. It's an update on the landscape restoration for the rear of the property.
I do not see him here.
He's not here? Oh, he's outside.
That was.
For?
Angel's touch, right? Angel's touch, see if he's out there?
In the back. This is an update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Everybody's here?
I can, I can speak for him.
Okay. Jen, Jen knows of it.
Yes. Thank you. This is for one forty-eight MacArthur Boulevard. It's Angel's Touch. There was landscaping that needed to be completed in the front portion of the property and restoration of the back portion of the property. The front portion of the property was completed in twenty twenty-three. The rear, he plans to complete in the springtime. And the rear bond is for ten thousand forty-three dollars. It is set to expire, so I think the board would need to maybe put another end date on this. It's, yeah, it's expiring, so that's why I had to come back to the board.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So are we looking to try to have the end date certain by?
You can have it, I mean, he intends on doing it in the spring.
But in case there's anything going on?
So.
Till May first or something?
I'd say, no, I'd go later than that.
What is the date now? Just out of curiosity.
Oh, it's Jan, January twenty twenty-four. It's, it's now.
It's now.
Now.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion that we extend this to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I think, based on the last two springs that we've had, which I don't think you can call a spring. I mean, June, we didn't see temperatures over seventy until the end of the month, so.
June thirtieth?
I think June thirtieth is adequate time for them to get that done.
Motion to extend to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Seconded by Doc. Any further discussion from the board and the audience? Saying here and now requires a roll call.
It was on the board when this started.
You can do it now. You can extend it.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is the enforcement of special permit zero two twenty twenty. Two seventy-four Williston Road, map seven, parcel forty-eight. Landscape corrective actions requested. Jen, do you have any comments on this one to open this one up?
I believe the owners are here, so I don't know if they want to speak to it.
You want to, you want to speak right now?
I don't know if we have an issue. I don't know specifically what to speak about.
That's what I thought, so we'll.
I can summarize them right there. Let me just pull this file here. So this property was granted a backlot special permit. And part of the condition of the backlot special permit was that there needed to be a ten-foot buffer along the driveway and then a twenty-five-foot buffer, landscape, natural vegetative buffer along the northern and west side of the property, twenty-five feet. And a lot of it has been cleared out. We did a site visit about maybe a year, a couple of years ago, and we asked them for a landscaping plan, restoration plan, and we haven't received it, so I think that's what we're here for this evening.
Okay. So what we're looking to do is the amount of clearing that you guys have done along the property?
Yes.
Because you're supposed to have a ten-foot buffer along your driveway, between your driveway and your neighbor, and then a twenty-five-foot buffer along the western northerly sections of your property.
Basically the three sides.
Right.
Except for the back, because we own a lot of property out back.
Right, because a lot of that was, I know there was a lot of trees that were dead in there. There was a lot of invasive species back there, but you've cleared a lot more than you're supposed to?
We went back to exactly where we were supposed to.
The entry drive doesn't look that way.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the entry drive, we're supposed to have.
Can you, can you come up, sorry, can you come up for the podium? And just your name for the record.
Yep. My name is Dana Hannah. This is my wife, Moanne Hannah. We, we have ten feet on both sides of the driveway, and one side is on an angle like this, and I didn't know what to do with it. It's too steep to mow. It's just when they dug the driveway in, it just happened to be a bank there. I saw some estates over in Southborough where they had the same problem. They put in half, a half-inch piece stone or nice beautiful stone along that edge. It looked great, and I said, "That's what we want for that side." The other side is nice and flat. It's along the driveway. We put a lawn there with sprinkler systems. Out at the road, we have some rose bushes, a stone with a house number on it. It looks good, as good as it could possibly look. I've been trying to not use any beds. In Northborough, we had beds everywhere, and they were gorgeous. We had fantastic property, but it was constant weeding, 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 weeding. You get it all done, two weeks later, there's weeds everywhere again. It's like, no more beds. This new house, that was the plan, avoid beds at all costs. But we're going to have a small bed out by the street where the rose bushes are and stuff, but other than that, the, the stone along one edge looks great. It, it's steep. We did have a twenty, twenty to thirty-foot bed along the edge of the driveway, and I had bushes and trees. It just, just, it, it looked great. But besides the constant weeding, everything that we planted in there outgrew the bed. I mean, they just, they were hanging over the driveway, cutting them off. It just, they outgrew it. And now we have ten feet. There's not much you could plant in there that wouldn't be, be outside of the ten feet in no time. That's the ten-foot on there. On the front, we only own forty-nine feet in front. It was supposed to have a twenty-five-foot buffer, but it's all lawn there. The neighbor that's in front of us, they put up a six-foot-high vinyl fence that looks like crap. It really does. But he had it, he wanted it, he did it. It's his property. There was nothing I could do about it. But that takes care of him. Out in back, we had White Horse come in, and we have a, had, did some vista pruning through a natural corridor. It was like seventy-five feet from pine tree to pine tree, and after the pine tree were a row of pine trees. So we did our vista, it was, we had the bump out in the house. It was all glass. This was the perfect vista. We did minimum cutting. But there were pine trees along there with dead branches all the way up to thirty to thirty-five feet, and briars were all climbing, all wrapped around the tree. White Horse for eight thousand dollars stripped from thirty feet down, took down the briars, the dead wood. Now you can see right through, you can see the ocean in park. It's great. The neighbors across the street said, "Oh, it's so nice. They can see fireworks now when they blow up." And I thought, oh, I hadn't, hadn't thought of that. As far as the trees, I had submitted a plan.
Can I show you this?
This is our neighbor's house, the yellow house. Honey, what is it, two forty-six?
Two seventy-six.
Beth Tyse's house. It's a yellow house. It's right here.
Right.
We had cleared right to the stake here, which is the property, not us, but the landscapers. But then they pulled away from our line a little bit and left some brush there that's twenty feet high that you can't really see the house, but through here you can. So what I did is I submitted this plan to somebody's office, conservation's office. I was going to put in eight spruce trees. I submitted this in May. They said one to two.
Yeah, give, give, I will, I will. He's trying to explain it, and I'll, I'm sorry. No, I.
Because we can't hear what he's saying.
Oh, you can't, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have this for the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, there's some writing on there. I have a tendency to write on anything that's.
What we're going to do is we're going to put this on the planning board.
Okay.
So you can link on, you can see what this, what he's talking about, just so you have an idea. I, I understand your point.
We did submit that.
We did submit that in May to block off basically Beth and Tyse's house. They're at two, two forty-seven.
Two seventy-six.
Two seventy-six, I'm sorry.
Right.
They said one to two weeks they should get back to me. Three weeks went by. We hadn't heard anything. I called up the town. I asked how they were making out, if they accepted it because the nursery that had given me the price on the spruce, there was a time limit on it. I, I wanted to get them in the ground. They said that they lost it, so I hand-carried another copy back down, and I never heard another word about it after that.
Okay.
And then, when I talked to the neighbors across the street, and they said, "No, they can see the great view if I had put in those spruce trees. In ten years, those spruce trees, they wouldn't be able to see anything. They grow to a hundred feet tall, and, and especially if I put in twelve of them, oh my God, it would just, it would have been a mistake." So I'm very pleased they never got back to us. Since then, since then, we've seen people put in mountain laurel or rhododendrons or whatever you call them, and you can prune them to any height you want. And it's like the perfect border. I would love to go, you know, wall to wall from the driveway all the way to the, to the stone wall with those. And that way I can keep them at six feet or eight feet enough where you can't really see the house.
Even along the north side as well.
Even along the north side, as wide as now, I would like to do the same.
Now, we, we understand what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
But there's requirements which you need to do.
We need permission.
And you need approval.
Basically the same thing, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, but not just say, "Okay, do it," because we have to approve the plan. So what we have to do is we have, you know, we'll have to work with a landscape person to come up with a plan that meets the restoration requirement. And along the ten-foot buffer, along the driveway, and the twenty-five-foot restrictive buffers, we have to look at that. So before you go out.
I'm not, I'm not going to do it. Sorry.
But before you go out and plant a whole bunch of things which you would like, have the plan approved so you know it's okay, and that's what you have to do.
I wouldn't do it without the town's blessing.
That's what I'm saying.
Excuse me, I wouldn't.
So that's what I'd like you to do, is to work with the town.
Yep.
To come out with a, a restoration plan.
Yep.
That we would sit here, we'd have documents so that the butters in the public can see.
Sure.
So then we could look at it.
Everybody gives their blessing, basically.
We can approve it, and then once we approve it, then you can hire a company to make that plan work. That's what, that's what we're trying to guide you to.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay?
Yep.
Doc?
Yeah. I, I think you missed how serious this is. You had a covenant on your deed that said you'll maintain, I think it's two ten-foot buffers on either side of the driveway
I remember.
and a twenty-five-foot. That was filed with the, with the county. That's on your deed. So there's that. And we will look very, very carefully at your restoration plan, and I don't think it's going to be cheap. The second point is vista pruning. Tell me more about vista pruning. The vista is over conservation land, isn't it? I mean, is there not a buffer zone? Are we vista pruning in a conservation commission buffer zone?
I think they, yeah, they went before conservation.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah. We went through Steve.
Fine, that's their business.
Yeah, you bet.
So, yeah, so if you could work with the town to come up with a restoration plan, it will put you back on the agenda. You have plenty of time. It's winter time. You're not going to be doing any planting in the next month or two. So that way, exactly, that way, we can time it out to get it done.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking to do.
When's Stevie due back?
She's back.
She's back.
Oh.
She's back.
That's great. So you understand what we're trying to do?
I absolutely do.
Jen?
Can I just suggest on the landscaping plan to have a plant list and quantities and caliber on it? And I don't know if there's any other additional items. And do you want a deadline when the plan needs to be submitted by?
I'm looking February.
Just so you understand, we're talking about an industry standard planting plan, plant list, quantities keyed to a graphic that, that is understandable by the board.
I did the best I could with that graph.
We're looking for.
Yes.
That's the key word. We want a professional doing this.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
So do we want a date specific to try to be back here with the plan, or should we?
I would suggest thirty days, maybe forty-five at the most because if we start to then to look into the planting season, we're already into like April and May. So I think the sooner we approve the plan, it gives them the time to get the professionals.
How about February twenty-second? That's us, last meeting in February. So we'll hope to see a, a plan?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're not, we don't have to continue this, but we'll get the plan and then we'll put it on the agenda for February twenty-second. Or should we just continue it to February twenty-second?
I would.
Just continuing.
Continue.
Yeah, okay. That way the butters and the neighbors would understand February twenty-second is when we'll be back. And then we'll have any updates then. So take a look at the agenda in the website for any information. I'm speaking to you, the public here, the neighbors. That way you'd be in touch with, with, what's going on because we will post all those plans on.
Do I have any input before?
You could, yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to get a feel here. So, yeah.
Twenty-second.
Yep, so would, would the, the idea is to continue to February twenty-second? So we won't have any, you know, it'll be on the agenda for the twenty-second is what I'm trying to get.
I'm just, I just want to put some in so it'll be clear what I would like.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Regardless of what you would like to submit as well.
No, no, we get it, and the restoration plan would be, we have a landscape, a couple of landscape people that are here that completely understand it, so. Yeah, yeah, so.
Add to that too, Chairman, thank you. And the landscape plan is due seventy-two hours before the meeting, so it would be due by Friday, February sixteenth.
Okay.
Conservation office.
I got you in a second. Yep, so I got a motion to continue to February twenty-second, correct?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion from the board and the audience?
My name is Glenn Tripp. I live at two seventy-six Williston Road. The property that abuts his with the driveway. I understand the, the restoration part of it, the total lack of going with the plan that he was granted from the town and the total, everything's gone, everything. There is no vegetation. If you look at the, what was supposed to be done, he wasn't supposed to touch anything. He says he's got all this rock and stuff. Yeah, it looks nice, but that's not what was supposed to be. We have no privacy from the road anymore or from the other neighbors. The back twenty-five feet, I have grass growing up to the back, almost to the back of my shed, which is right on the lot line, let alone twenty-five feet away. I've had to call the police on him because he sprayed vegetation herbicide on weeds because he didn't like my weeds growing into his rocks. I have pictures of him digging up plants in my yard because he didn't like the roots growing into. I don't believe anything that this gentleman says. I, I just think that he's totally gone against what he agreed to when he signed up for this plan. And if I have any input, I, I would like it to be put back the way it was with, take his rocks out, put loam in, let's put the blueberry bushes back, let's put the raspberry bushes back, let's put the maple trees back.
Briars. It was mostly briars.
It's natural. The thing says natural because you weren't supposed to touch it.
Right, so in, in the restoration plan, that'll all be considered. We understand your point.
Well, I mean, but it's going to, it's going to take centuries for it to grow back. It wasn't supposed to be touched in the first place.
We understand that, but we're trying to restore it. We got to start someplace.
Right.
And this is the.
But I, I don't, I, I would not like a oak tree here and an oak tree here. I want the whole thing, I would like the whole thing stripped and planted bush, plant tree, whatever it is to make, you know, the natural border that was supposed to be.
Right, no, we understand that.
I'm, I'm just saying that, I, I guess I don't have much to say. I'm not going to belittle the guy any more than I have.
No, but we, we understand your concern, and the town's looking to try to restore it.
And he shouldn't have done it.
Right.
You're right.
But it, but it's done now.
No.
And you can't undo what's done.
But that's why we call it a restoration plan.
Right, but I mean, he's talking about briars.
No.
Briars were, the briars were there, and that was perfect for us. We didn't see the headlights coming into our house.
No, we understand.
We didn't see the neighbors, but the briars aren't going to come back in, in five years. Right, so, I mean, we're going to lose on the deal, but I just want it to be done the way that it should be done.
We understand.
And it shouldn't have been done anyway. And I don't know, I don't know. Is there anything else?
No, I think you pretty much said it.
No, we, we understand your concerns.
Okay.
And it'll be all part of the restoration project, and all that will be public, and you can look at it prior to our meeting.
Now, is there a timeframe for, I mean, besides his plan? Now, is there a timeframe for, I mean, besides his plan, is there a time, how, how long does it take for him to redo this?
The plan's got to be approved. And after that, well, then we'll put a timeline on it at the public hearing on the 22nd.
Okay. All right. I guess.
Just like we did with the other restoration.
I, I, I understand that. You're not going to plant anything now.
But just similar to the other restoration plan, we talked just before this one. We gave it to June 30th. So that's what I mean. We need a plan and then we'll go.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. It's just like, I don't understand how it even got that far where he just went and did it anyway. I know my wife went out and tried to stop the construction people from doing it. And either he told them to keep going or they just kept going.
Yeah. So we're, we're at the point now to re, redo it. So that's where we are now.
I mean, there's nothing else I can do about that though, but yeah.
So we're trying to restore the damage that was done.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions or comments from the audience, podium, on the motion?
Joan Buchanan. I have property on Pilgrim Road, at least 350 feet of frontage. I am concerned, this property is conservation land. So my concern, and I asked this committee, could the conservation committee look at the back land behind his house on that whole strip of area from where I own? I cannot see or get to that line because of, it is conservation, some of it is wet, some of it is not. I just wonder if the conservation people can look at the back line as well as you're setting up what, on the other pieces of property.
We will ask. I can't order them in there. We can ask them.
I, that's, if you would do that.
That we can do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I was just gonna say, I would make a motion that we request staff to contact conservation to have them look at it.
That's part of the restoration plan.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why.
Make sure that they're looking at it.
So we have a motion to continue the restoration plan to February 22nd. The plans have to be in by Friday, the 16th, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Atkins. I own the property at 28 Pilgrim Road. Now, when this was all coming to fruition, we were in COVID time. And this was being held by Zoom meetings. And I attended it in my living room. And I was told by the board at that time that there was going to be required to be a 25-foot, I believe, turnaround for the fire department, which never materialized. Because if you were driving that fire truck and you went all the way down that driveway to fight a fire in that house or get somebody out in an emergency situation, a hell of a long driveway to back up, back out onto Williston Road. So they were told to put that in, which they did not. They put in all grass. If you, if any of you people have been down there, it's all grassed in. You don't put loom and grass where you're planning to do restoration. They had no intention of restoring this. They had no intention of putting in the turnaround for the fire department. I don't understand how the town of Born issues occupancy permits to people who don't conform with what they're told to do, particularly regarding anything that's recorded with the county. This is required. I mean, perhaps this man doesn't understand that when he goes to sell this house, if any intelligent attorney, the fellow I used to hire looks it up, he's gonna say, you can't buy this. They couldn't conform to what they were told to do. This makes this property unpurchisable, as if it can't be purchased because there's a cloud on the title, is what it amounts to. So I don't understand why the building department issues occupancy permits to people who do not follow the rules and regulations that were set down for them when they got permission to build their property.
We understand your point. We're not going to argue an occupancy permit. It's not our purview.
Oh, I'm not arguing any permit.
So we, we understand your point. Do you have any questions or concerns about the restoration project?
Yeah, where's the 25-foot turnaround for the fire department?
Talk about the restoration. We, we will look at that.
That's part of the restoration.
We'll look at that. We're, we're talking about the buffer zones right now.
Sure. Well, I, the whole thing is one.
On our agenda, on our agenda, if you look at it, it's landscape, landscape. So I, I understand your point.
I'm not debating the point with you.
You were.
Oh, sir, I am not. I'm stating the facts as they exist, Mr. Dusak.
We understand.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hold on, the lady in the back.
Hi, my name is Lauren Atkins. My husband and I own 28 Pilgrim Road, which backs up to the area that is in discussion tonight, the 25-foot buffer zone. Prior to the establishment of 274 Williston Road, the shed that was on the property that we own was not visible. It was obscured by lots of bushes. The bushes are gone. The sheds all along are visible. They should not be visible. And they need to be made invisible again with the plan that will be submitted. I distinctly remember the evening where they discussed this turnaround also by the fire department because they felt it was a safety situation where a fire engine could get to the property but couldn't get back safely. So those are things I distinctly remember. And the place looks beautiful, but it looks like a golf course. So I think that you guys are being very fair in getting this plan. And hopefully, everything will be beautiful and put back to, to as well as it can be done as it was before the construction. Thank you.
Just one question, please. One question. You said the shed was on your property?
Yes.
It was invisible. Now it's visible.
Right.
Are you saying there was clearing taking place on your property?
No, no, no. The 25 feet from the property line forward, my shed would have been on the line or thereabouts. And it was not visible. I could not even see it. I took a walk through this massive, beautiful.
I'm just fuzzy on them clearing on their side of the property line exposed your shed.
Right. 25 feet worth of, of brush was removed. And therefore, voila, there's my shed.
Brush was removed between your shed and your eyeball, so to speak? Between your shed and your house?
From the property line where the people have their line from the property line forward, not to my property, to their property.
I guess I don't understand how your shed became visible.
Well, because before it was visible, there were bushes. Before, when, there were bushes. There were like five yards along there. None of them were visible. And now they're all visible because all the brush that separated them has been removed. And so those 25 feet that were supposed to be left, which would have obscured all those sheds, is gone.
From your house?
From, from.
From the buffer?
From the buffer.
From the buffer.
This is our real property line here. This is Mr. Hannah's property, the driveway into his house here. This is our shed here.
Okay.
This 25-foot buffer zone that went from our property line into their property.
Right.
Was already moved.
Right.
Now the shed is completely exposed. The rear wall was a shed. If you wanted to put up a dot board and throw dots, you would have no obstruction. Because if you tried to do it before this project was done, you would have hit the trees and the vines and everything else. You never would have thought of dots really.
So all the 25-foot buffer is on, yeah, okay. It's not on your property.
We can move forward. And this plan is going to be dynamite, is going to be beautiful. And as fast as they can grow this stuff, there are some trees that grow amazingly quick, you know, and perhaps things will go back to a similar situation. And the house that these people build is absolutely gorgeous.
Beautiful.
It's a, it is a, it's a benefit to the neighborhood.
Only for a public way.
But it is beautiful.
Very good.
Thank you.
It's an answer. It's a manure. It's a real answer. It's absolutely gorgeous. And it's a credit and an asset to the town. However.
Clearing.
They didn't do it according to what they were given.
Exactly.
And that's what they gotta remediate.
And that's why we're here.
Am I gonna put in a tree that's gonna grow up in six months and, you know, like a white paper bird? It has not. But you better do what you can to try and remediate what happened. Because you can't take down what's gloom and plant it all back. That's just the way it is.
We got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? I'm gonna give it to Liz right, real quick.
I, I remember this discussion quite well. And I, do you remember talking about a fence? Did we ever discuss having a fence? Was there a reason not to have a fence between, did you, did you all decide you didn't want a fence? I just can't remember that part. Did that come up? Because you were all, all here. Is it something that you would want?
No.
Okay, that's what I.
When we got into it, it cost too much money.
Well, it wouldn't be on your dime.
It doesn't bark.
You wouldn't be paying for it.
The neighbor on the side of us, where if the trees that he took down would have stayed there, but you know, the 40-foot pines and oaks, maybe we wouldn't have decided our driveway, maybe we wouldn't have seen that other house.
And it's supposed to be a vegetative buffer.
And I, I would, I understand. I would prefer a vegetative buffer. I'm just curious. In the meantime, in the meantime, or if it ever came up or, you know, I don't know.
But I did have another question.
You gotta come to the podium, some people here, so I'm sorry.
It's just a knowledge question.
I'd like to turn, I was just gonna say that.
What was your address again, sir? Sorry.
Glenn Tripp, 276 Williston Road. What defines life and limb in diseased trees? What, what is, what is, okay, what would you call life and limb?
I'm not gonna define that.
It's in, it's in the, it's in the plan. It's in the plan.
Yep.
Do not remove diseased or what defines that as, because there were trees that were still standing, granted, held up by the vines that he took all down, which removed the trees. Nobody said they were diseased. They were 100 feet from his house. It's not like he's out mowing his lawn and the tree's gonna fall on him. I mean, you can't replace them now because they're gone.
Right.
But I, I was just curious what defines life and limb? And why were the trees removed?
I think they were removed by mistake. That's my guess.
I don't think it was mistake.
Might have been, but it wasn't on the plan to do that. It was what I'm getting at.
No, it's in, it's in the plan that they were allowed to remove diseased trees in, in something that was of life and limb. But what's life and limb? That's what I'm asking. Why were those trees removed if they were, if they posed no threat to anybody? Just a question.
Are you, are you talking about within the vegetative buffer or on the property general?
Yeah, in the vegetative buffer.
I don't think they should have been, but they were.
I'm sorry?
I don't think they should have been. That's pretty obvious.
No, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to add to it that, that there's total disregard for whatever rules that he signed and you all agreed to. And now I'm suffering, Mr. Atkins is suffering? No?
And that's why we're trying to restore it.
Okay. Well, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
It's a very, it's a very odd.
I have a question. The man just asked.
They subdivided the progress. And there was a front.
I don't think it measured as a block. So perhaps the block should have been required. But you know, it's too late. After the bomb runs down, you can't get out the whole thing.
So this was up next to?
Remembering that, all of these people on this board, and every other board in the town, cheers as volunteers to help the betterment and the beauty and the preservation of our communities.
We understand that.
And you're here to help.
We understand that. That's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Everybody answering up.
Exactly.
We're not happy.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? The audience, I have a motion. I have a second. Need a vote? This is continued now to February 22nd, with the plans needing to be in by February 16th.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And again, they'll be posted online as we get the plans. Next on the agenda is the project update for 01, 2022, 568 MacArthur Boulevard, Kudo Management Group, map 39.0, parcel 77, update on the building dimensions and acceleration, deceleration lanes. There he is. Something we've been waiting for, for a while.
Mm-hmm. It's all happening right there in that little spot. We're gonna talk about.
You gonna jump out the window? They tried for so many times.
We don't have six feet of separation.
Take your bike.
People forgot about your floor and six feet away and all that.
Okay, floor's yours, Zach.
For the record, Zach Vasinski, professional engineer, Barackon Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Mr. Kudo and Kudo Management Group. This is 568 MacArthur Boulevard. We're in front of the board two years ago. We were granted a special permit site plan review for a Dunkin' Donuts on the lot. Since that time period, it took us a year. We went out, met with DOT, got approval for a de-acceleration lane, shown here in orange. It's gonna stretch across the property frontage of the property and extend further northerly in front of 560 MacArthur Boulevard. Since that time period, it took another year to go through Dunkin' Donuts themselves to get the final project site and programming approved through corporate. During that time period, corporate came back and asked Mr. Kudo to upsize the minimum size of the building. So initially, we were granted approval for about a 1,900 square foot building. We're going, sorry. Yeah, sorry, 2,000 square foot building. And we're going up to a 2,700 square foot building. So building expansion is inside the initial approved island. We're gonna adjust the parking lot pavement during construction to keep the open space numbers that were approved and the impervious coverage that was approved under the original design. And just wanted to give the board the update on that. Right now, Mr. Kudo is working with his architect to finalize the architectural plans. And we hope to have those filed within three to six months and start construction this summer.
Do we need a minute site plan?
I didn't think so because nothing has changed, the lot coverage hasn't changed. Nothing has changed.
Yeah, lot coverage will stay the same, everything else. So I think tonight was just a more informal to let you guys know about this, understanding that stir crazy was coming in with the board.
Yeah, I, it's just from the square footage from 2027, does it, does it, my question would be, does it demand, and I haven't seen the plan, is, would it demand more parking spaces?
Uh, no, it's still within what was previously approved for the number, because we had extra spaces on the site.
Okay. And those, those are some of the concerns that I have.
I thought the Health Department had a comment about the expanded footprint. And they said they had an interest in it.
The number of seats or?
Sorry?
The number of seats.
Health Department just said we had to file for a septic plan with them and their initial review. Everything will meet the groundwater protection district requirements for the septic system. The town manager's office had put a comment on there. They just want to see the final seating plan for the licenser when they apply for the business license. And that's the things that we're working on.
What will the additional floor space consist of? 700 feet? What will the additional floor space consist of? 700 feet?
Uh, so it's a little bit larger of the kitchen area, and it's actually to expand the windows between the drive-through that comes through.
Space them out?
Yeah, space them out a little bit more between. So it's their queuing time between the ordering window where they pay from and then where they pick up. National Corporate, for a while, they had gone to the McDonald's drive-through configuration.
Which is?
Where we were going to have the two approaches, and then they have two ordering micros, order windows. But as you can see, McDonald's doesn't use them anymore either.
Right, right.
They'll have only one, so they've gone back to one ordering section.
Okay.
And then a larger space between the two windows.
So there's an ordering window and a paying win, or a paying window and a receiving?
Receiving window.
Interesting. I've never seen that with a dunk.
Well, they still have to speak into the microphone, right?
Speak into the microphone, pay at one window.
Yeah, like at the McDonald's. I've never seen that with dunks. Interesting.
But getting that deceleration lane was a big deal.
Yeah.
That was a very important piece of this.
I think that makes sense in this site because I think this site is going to be very busy. Especially working hours, morning and stuff. So having the two windows, that two-window system may not go into effect all the time. It doesn't at McDonald's, which is on MacArthur Boulevard. They have two windows, and sometimes they'll just tell you when you order, go up to the second window. But during heavy peak, yeah, during heavy peak times, I can see them using that, so.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you know about this at all, or if this is even like your wheelhouse, but do you know what's happening with the one on Barlow's Landing and the one on Clay Pond? Like, are they staying?
Our staying is that the Barlow's Landing is staying. There's nothing changing with that one.
Okay.
So.
If we miss you, we go to the other.
You still got the other one down the street, so if this one's full, you still got another one to get to.
Clay Pond is closing up, what they told us the last time. Clay Pond is closing when this one comes up.
Because they want to expand, uh, what is it?
7-Eleven?
No, 7-Eleven is not expanding.
Oh, no?
There's going to be another rental space. I talked to the owner of 7-Eleven yesterday, and they don't know where that came from. That came from Cumberland Farms. Told us that they were being forced out when they weren't.
Oh, okay.
Jane, you got a comment?
No, I just think, um, just for the record, it's not an amended special permit because they're not increasing any of their lot coverage or, um, anything in their zoning summary. Nothing is changing in the zoning summary, and it's less than 1,600 square feet. And it's within what their, um, I guess the pavement was planned to be, so.
And no increased parking?
There's no increased parking required.
So do we want to show this, I mean, I just want to make sure we get the plan to show it on an ASBIL?
Absolutely.
You know, I just-
This is the revised plan, but yes, on the ASBIL.
Staff is saying because it's less than 1,600 square feet, it's within your footprint. You're not adding any other use to the, the floor space, as in seating. You're not adding any other cars, because I was thinking amended site plan from the beginning. So, and I was trying to discuss with staff, and staff says that it doesn't need to have the amended. But I just want to make sure that we show it so then it's not built and then it's not to the plan. So I just want to make sure we discuss that, other than saying, I'm coming in, I'm expanding 700 square feet, and I'll see you when, you know, when I get my occupancy permit. So I just want to make sure the board and the public understand what's going on with the expanded square footage, and it's less than 1,600 feet, square feet, no additional parking spaces, no seating in it, in that 700 square feet. So staff is saying, show it on a, on the ASBIL. So I just want to make sure we all understand where, where, what direction we're going in. Because it has been a while since, you know, two years is the begin, what, from the beginning?
Yeah, two years, yeah. And we, we felt coming back to the board just to give you an update with the construction entrance, knowing the other development going on in the area, so it can be planned with all the other developments going on.
That's good. That's good. So, so good. I just want to make sure that everybody understands. Anybody else got a question from the board?
Quick question. Zach, the deceleration lane, that's no expansion of the pavement. It's just taking the breakdown lane like they've done in the other areas?
No, we're actually, they're going to be widening the pavement seven feet. So the orange strip that you see on the plan.
It's down below.
Mr. Kudo is actually, has to, starts at the entrance into 560, has to widen it seven feet, has to relocate two utility poles, restring the wires above it. So he has an extreme expense with it, but it's for the benefit of the area, so.
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
And I know there was, we've looked at it before, there was no room for an acceleration lane. And that's, I was just there the other day looking at another project on that road. But there's a great line of sight distance for people coming out of Forest Park onto the boulevard. So almost would be useless to put in an acceleration lane. I don't think they need one, so.
And that's what DOT had confirmed.
Good, good. Any other question, comment from the board? The audience? All right. Good luck. And again, you understand with the increase to show it on the ASBIL.
Yeah, we'll show everything on the ASBIL. We'll have that final plan with the staff.
Thank you so much.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be supportive finding 07-2023 SF and a waiver of a special permit site plan review, 07-2023 W. It's 570 MacArthur Boulevard, map 39, parcel 77.3. The application for supportive finding and a waiver of a site plan review special permit to convert the temporary outdoor dining area into a permanent outdoor dining area to serve the food or beverages to persons outside the building due to the limitations of indoor dining imposed in the Commonwealth from the COVID-19 public health emergency. This project is in a water resource district. Anybody here present?
I don't see anyone.
No, I don't see anybody.
No, and I, we tell them we need them to-
They're in Cambodia right now.
Oh, yeah, they're on break.
That's why it's closed for the season.
How we doing for time?
It's when I crave it the most, too.
We need a waiver.
There's nobody here to sign for it.
I think it's okay. I think, I don't know if it needs a time. Does it need a time waiver?
I don't think so.
There's just a couple of the concerns as we discuss and look for the time. I visited the site a couple, one of, one issue I had, that the dumpsters were not enclosed. It's supposed to be screened and enclosed. Another one was there's 13 plus or minus cars, trailers and boats in the parking area. So if they're going to increase the seating on the outside, those cars, trailers and boats have to get removed. And also-
Permanently.
Yeah, permanently, yeah. And then one of the other things is, there was two other pieces of property on the same side of the road, Forest Park, that the developer agreed to put in some trees to line the road. So I didn't know if we can have some trees put along that edge to try to break it up to be consistent as we did, so that would continue the whole road. As, as a concern, as a little additional landscaping.
Seven, Seven Forest Park hasn't even broke ground yet.
Correct.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that we get, ask him if he keeps a tree line between them? Is it stir crazy?
Oh, no, street trees. Street trees. Street trees. That, I, I understand that lot has not, they haven't broke ground. But on the plan, it shows street trees. So we did street trees at the very end of Forest Park, next project up. And this is the only one that abuts it to make it the MacArthur Boulevard. So try to be consistent. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I think we should, we should, we should request that from them, along with the removal of the boats and stuff.
Yeah.
The parking lot works with the existing dining area because it's been in place for, going on three years now. It does work, so.
Doc?
I looked at their diagram, the last sheet on the application for supportive findings, and they have a notation, concrete fence. Please tell me those are not Jersey barriers.
I think they're concrete blocks.
You mean like retaining wall blocks? The just?
A con, I think they're concrete blocks. They're like-
And they're four feet, six feet.
They painted them.
Like the big Legos. Big Lego blocks.
Like green and red.
They surrounded the parking lot where they now have outside dining.
Could they put planters or something?
Editorial comment. People shoot themselves in the foot. I mean, they want an outdoor space, they want it to be attractive, and it could very well be attractive and in addition to the neighborhood. Just put bollards in to protect people from the car, and then maybe in the space between, you put planters. Do something. Use your head.
We could have time.
They have that down, I saw that down in Falmouth. It's a little slice of Italy they have. The planters, with the plants right in the middle so you can't go across the parking lot and hit the other car.
Planters can be of such a mass that they, they are their own bollards.
Right.
You know, it costs a little money, but think big. This is just a little too incremental, you know, concrete blocks. I, I don't know if this is the venue for it, but if we can ask for street trees, we could ask them to at least make a proposal.
I'm just going to make sure he's not, I'm just going to make sure he's not of a lobby waiting or something.
No, he's not.
No, okay.
Here in Cambodia.
We do have time because we don't want constructive approval, so that's, that's what we're looking at.
I understand the money's tight.
Let's continue this in the next meeting then.
So I want any other comment from the board members, but yeah, we will continue it. I'm just looking at the dates. Any other questions or comments from the board members? Liz, you were looking at this?
Yeah, no, no, no.
I'm sorry, we jumped on, on your project.
He covered everything. He did a good job.
Okay, well, thanks. Any other comments?
That's why you're the chair.
No, I don't know about that. That's why we got a great board. Any other questions or comments from the audience? No? All right, this will be continued if we get a motion to January 25th. We moved second. A motion to continue the 25th. I have a motion made by Chris, seconded by John.
Yeah.
And any other comment on the motion from the board, from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none. Requires roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Jean?
Yes.
Yes, we got it. So we're going to continue that. And hopefully, we can have somebody here.
Yeah, we really need them here.
Next one is a application to amend site plan special permit 19-20-21 B to Kendall Ray Place, map 24.1, parcel 6, continued from 12-14-23. The application is to amend site plan special permit 19-20-21 A to change the name of the applicant from Oxford Development Group LLC to CMP Development LLC. Any other letters? Okay. We have a, a letter that, or a document. It's the assignment and the assumption agreement, and it is signed by Oxford Development Group, Jason Penone, and it's also signed by CMP Development LLC, Manuel Pina, both authorized representatives. So we have a document that's been signed. And council has reviewed this?
Uh, do you want me to speak for that? Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, we sent this to town council today, and he was satisfied with the wording of it.
Very good.
And we also have, I think, attorney Chartwell on there and Ryan and Don on the screen.
Very good. Any questions or comments from any board members? Does anybody in the Zoom, any council members want to make comment? Because I'm looking for an approval of this tonight, so if that's where I'm headed. So if you guys have any questions or comments, I'd be more happy to take them. Seeing none. Any questions or comments from the audience? I'd entertain a motion for the, the change of the name of the applicant from Oxford Development Group LLC to CMP Development LLC. So moved. Motion to accept, seconded by Liz. Any questions on the motion from the board, from the audience? Chris?
This is to transfer the, the special permit. What we never finished is open, it's still open. Is that correct? So they're just transferring everything up to date?
Up, up, everything that's current goes over, and there's still, there's at least one outstanding. There's maybe a couple of outstanding issues. But the permit has been approved, but when we did the site plan special permit on Two Kendall Ray, the town asked us not to talk about, or get the approval of the parking until the project was approved, and that was their next step. That's where they were headed. It's not like they didn't want to do it, but that was the step, was the direction it was supposed to go.
So that part has not been done, so?
That hasn't been done only because things out of our control and their control prevented that from happening. Any other questions or comments? Chris?
I just have one other question, and it's, I don't know if we can bring it up during this, but there's still outstanding issues from CMP development on the rest of the property. They put the street lights up, but they never flipped the switch and turned it on.
I understand that, and this is only for the change in names. Similar, similar, that's what's on the agenda.
No, it's just like we're, we're losing any leverage we have.
I understand. Any other questions or comments from the board, audience? We have a motion, motion been made and seconded. Requires a roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Pardon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board members, your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in regards to that application now, will the board be appointing somebody to be the representative to negotiate those license agreements that are part of the special permit?
That is- Yeah, that, for the parking is with the Board of Selectmen. They have, they have care and custody. Okay, but you can call our staff and we can guide which direction you got to go to. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is an application for site plan review special permit 06-2023 for 46 Holt Road, map 23.2, parcel 156, continued from 12-14-23. The application is to construct two duplex residences for the total of four dwelling units. The floor is yours.
Good evening, committee members. Merlin Ladd for Ladd Homes, representative here. Since we met the first time, it was brought up about a dumpster and a pad, and these are going to be four individually-owned units. So whether they get a private contractor, get a pass to the land bill. So there is no dumpster being provided. Since we met also, conservation approved the site plan, and that's in the process of being recorded. Tuesday, I met with the Design Review Committee, and it was very favorable as far as the windows we're going to use, the trim, the colors, architectural shingles. There are a couple of things they wanted, which was the manufacture of the light. I've sent a bunch of stuff over to Julia. Also, there were some suggestions. That were brought up. Was to add rear doors to access the rear of the property. So we incorporated those. What else was? As far as egress, egress was brought up. As far as fire and escape, we deal with that with the building commissioner, but I did forward the state regulations regarding it, all those conforums. Now, Mr. O'Conne, you brought me a packet on rain gardens, and, because you wanted more detail than what was shown on the conservation plan. And I'm under tight time here with the owners of the property, and I did retain, foster, design their landscape architect. The reason I have it on vellum here, they don't use CAD, so they overlaid it on. The distance spacing, everything's to scale, and I just made that to Julia also. We also flagged the trees that right now can be saved. They don't have unfeathered access to the property yet, as far as driving states and everything else. When that part gets done, having foster design come, and we're only doing a four-foot footing. We're not doing a full foundation. So that way, we can get their input if anything else can be and will be saved. So to answer from before, when we first met, the dumpster and the screening, and then design review, and I took all the suggestions from design review as far as that, the rear doors, and so forth. So I'm looking for a favorable response for this project.
Mr. Chairman?
Doc?
We have Doug Shear, the chair of the Design Review Committee, and I actually asked him if he'd care to characterize the meeting, any other, any comments that he'd like to make.
he'd like to make.
Doug Shearer, chair of the design review, meeting went extremely well, sounds like the applicant is definitely willing to work with us, but the one aspect that was missing was a full landscape plan showing both street trees, set buffer zone trees, the rain gardens are definitely shown there. I don't know if the detail that we were asking for has been included in what has been submitted to you, but as long as we have our flag trees, we're trying to keep as much of the natural growth as possible on the lot. You know, we don't want to see it somewhat of something earlier today or tonight, everything stripped out again. Mr. Ladd witnessed that during, part of the hearing as well, so I think he knows what both the design review was looking for and what I expect you guys to be looking for as well. Happy to answer any questions. As far as our meeting, which was continued, we did not want to give a negative response as our recommendation to you, because I think, you know, overall, it looks like it will be a great project. There are some minor details that I think you guys might be discussing as well, as far as driveways and other things, but as far as the design review goes, we're not meeting, obviously, tonight, so I can't give you a positive or a negative for the board, but he has been working extremely well with us, and it looks like everybody's going in the right direction.
Thank you, Doc.
Yeah, the only ones that weren't flagged was, and I sent it to Julia, were these trees bordering the parking complex? I think they're not provided, is that what they call them?
Possibly.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanted to suggest and hire the professional as far as that. So those aren't, those are the only ones that are currently flagged?
Flag, you mean to be preserved?
Correct, correct. I mean, I do have like a perch in the back, it kind of looks sick, but it's growing, so we flagged that. And like I said, until it's 100% staked out, and then, like I said, have the posture design come, and-
My question to design, not, I'm asking our board members, with the design review committee, from what I understand, that the applicant is working well with your committee?
Appears so, yes.
And he says under tight constraints, and this is just the first step, and we got other things we're gonna be talking about, but on, just on the design review committee stuff, you think that can be conditioned into the approval? Any else, under the design review gets the approval?
So with the approval, they have a building permit?
No.
Sorry, sorry. The approval, special permit, sorry. Mr. Ladd thinks he has a professional on board. Our basic problem was that we didn't have a reviewable project. There was no landscape, there was no preservation. The town requires street trees on both streets, three on summer, I think, given the frontage length.
Yeah, the two, correct.
And two on Holt. And so those are not in there, but we discussed, there are some very nice trees on the Holt roadside.
Yep.
That's a very tight site. It's four units on a quarter acre.
Right.
It's very tight, so those buildings are gonna be close to the street. So we're asking for a sort of a reality check. How much room does the contractor need to dig his footings? He's not, they're not full basements. How much room does he need? And we originally said, we'd like at least 10 feet from the right-of-way into the site, all the significant trees be surveyed, located on the plan, so we know what's gonna be lost when you, when you put in driveways, for instance. Some of the driveways are 20 feet wide and so on. And so we will have to crack some eggs here, but there are some nice trees there, and they have presence. If they can be preserved, those would work as street trees, at least in some opinions.
Okay.
So we asked him for existing conditions, significant trees, a standard planting plan for the rain garden areas.
Yeah, you want me to bring this to you, Katie?
Well, you know, that has not officially been presented, so.
Yeah.
And that'll include the plant list, the sizes, because they're town requirements. So if you have a pro on board, that's encouraging.
Yeah, and to your point, couple of the trees, absolutely, like you said, this. Like you said, that's 10 feet, that's real tight.
10 feet from the right-of-way, from the right-of-way to the foundation wall is 10 feet? What is 10 feet?
Because the lot line's almost on top of, where, like you mentioned, over at summer, there's a big gap.
Right.
So 10 feet's real close, and there's a couple that are marked, I can show you, that actually grow out to the openness of the street, probably trying to grab the light. So we've marked those two, and going forward, you know, I still would have to, if, after you, building committee, I mean, the building department, and then from there, I need to go to sewer and water and see where, and I imagine they'd want to work with us also and work with everybody keeping it right. Okay, how can we get the least invasive going to the properties?
The electric-
So there's a couple variables that I wouldn't be able to tell you.
The electric is always a worry. The electric is on Holt, and there's a transformer on a utility pole. Currently, there is a line that goes across the site.
Yep.
So I'm worried about ham-handed, lying people excessively trimming. I think it would be good if the DRC could meet on site with you to look at the trees that you have tagged.
Mm-hmm.
And if we, if we like what we see, put snow fence around them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They'd be protected, because it is a tight lot.
Site plan also needs sidewalks, meaning how do you access the front door to the parking lots? They're not shown, so it'd be nice to have the sidewalk from the front door to the parking spaces, because those will cut into the area that can be planted. So we'd like to understand what we're working at, and we'd like to see your proposal between the buildings. The sidewalks aren't shown.
Yeah.
Quick question?
Just your standard three-foot wide sidewalk.
Sure, but the alignment, how far from the building, that type of thing.
Chris?
Just, Summer Street I'm not worried about, but on Holt Road, which side of the road are the power lines on? Are they on?
On the opposite side.
They're on the opposite side.
The poles on the opposite side.
Okay, so we don't have to worry if we do have to add plantings, we don't have to worry about them interfering like we had right over here with Kalamar, so, okay. I'm sure they're gonna do a great job. And I'd leave it up, my guess would be to leave it up to DRC, once their approval, I'm good.
Jane, do you have any comments on this? You're the reviewer.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if I could see what's being presented too, but, and Catherine as well, she's not here tonight. The meeting, you know, I appreciate the changes that are being made tonight, and I think it's gonna be a nice project. The things that Doc mentioned, and everyone's mentioned already, were concerns as well as the, we'd also have to show where cars were gonna be actually parked, because of some of the location of the driveway, and then we need to look at circulation, the relationship between the lot line and the deck, and make sure there's enough room for the cars on the property. So just put little monk cars or something on the site line, or just something.
Parking spots? I think they showed that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so they're not on a ham, ham.
I'll show you.
Okay.
I'll show you.
The original layout, I recall, they had at least two spots for each unit, especially on the Summer Street, because they had enough-
And they have a garage under.
They have the garage under, and they have a couple of spaces on the side, but if someone parks in front of the garage, there's a question of whether that car is partially within the right-of-way.
We have that everywhere. Yep.
I can work with him and show him how to drive on.
Okay, that's good. So-
Yeah, so it's a tight spot, just some massage, and some things we have to do to make it work. I think it's gonna be, I think it'll work out, though, yeah.
Good.
I think some teamwork together and-
Yeah. Now, the design review committee meets on demand occasionally?
Occasionally.
We meet again January 25th. My question is, would you guys be able to meet prior to our next meeting, if the gentleman can get his stuff in line? I mean, it looks like he got most of it done now.
Yeah, what more would we be looking for?
She's looking, we're looking at the parking, to show where the parking spots are gonna be?
A landscape, the landscape plan.
The landscape plan, you have some of it up there, but we don't have it to look at?
That's, yeah, that's-
The what?
The one, the colored one, you just got right there with the-
Yeah, you said they did an overlay, because they don't use CAD.
Yeah.
So we need to have-
Which is actually nice, kind of like human, you know, but, yeah, that's why it's overlaid. I did, I did do a scan of it, and so we can really see the definition of the plot plan underneath.
Yeah, and I think the DRC wants to see wherever you tag the trees to locate those on the plan. It's just, I want to make sure that the DRC, and I think, I think what we're looking for is the 25th, to continue to the 25th, and then we should be done. That's if the design review committee can meet.
Speaking personally, I'll be flexible, but I'm just speaking for myself.
Exactly. Is the chairman flexible?
I-
No.
I think the DRC had continued to February 26.
If Jane is available on the 23rd, and Doc is, I think we can make that happen.
I could be flexible on the day. I mean, but other people have tighter schedules.
Jane, you, you're on, Jane, you around on the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay, so we're starting in the right stuff, in the right spot. I think, talk to staff about some of the town issues. Talk with the DRC.
Like parking?
What's that?
Like parking?
The parking, or the marking, where the parking spots are gonna be. We know where the lots are, just show that they can put two cars there. I think we talk with the DRC, Doc and Jen through the DRC, so Jen will take care of the planning side of it for us, as well as working with the DRC. If between those two, you meet with the DRC on the 23rd, come back for us on the 25th, we're real close, and I feel comfortable. I think we should be able, would that be okay?
Yeah, the 25th?
Yeah.
So, just one question on some of the trees. So on this back line here, there's a lot of saplings on the rest of it. We just keep them, we don't need to mark every single one and show, right? You're just looking at the mature trees.
Sounds good to me. You know, if you've got a natural buffer-
I mean, yeah, true to natural.
We don't want to beat up on you. I think, I think the key are the two street frontages.
Mm-hmm.
And I would say this is a coordination issue. Does DRC meet on the site that day?
I could have a site visit.
And can, can you scan that in such a way that it is somewhat legible?
Yes, I have sent one.
Is it somewhat legible? That may be good enough.
Good.
Yeah, because I know that one-off, summer is more, the one-off Holt at 10 feet. So what, what does, what does it call for if you're 10 feet or less?
Yep.
Well, 10 foot, you can put a car in there and not be out in the road.
No, I'm saying for-
Maybe have a garage under.
The landscape.
Trees and stuff, that's gonna be tough.
We're likely to be driven by our excavation guys.
Yeah.
They're gonna need some working room.
Yes.
Just to, even if the bobcat has a footprint, even when it's digging on the center line, there is some destruction. So if, if we can save some decent trees on those frontages, I'd like to think we'd be a little more flexible about the little shrubberies in front of the building. That way, you know, you can put in your walkway, I think because those trees have presence, the neighbors will appreciate you much, much more than cleaning them out and going back and replanting. So it will save you money, it'll be better for the town if we can maximize what we save on those two street frontages, and if, you know, it, we may only have six feet to work with, so it may turn out to be that there is just one here and there, here and there, and here and there, but they're of a nice size that we'd like to save them.
All right.
So if you could do me a favor, if you can sign this, just waves the time constraints, otherwise they're gonna take a vote tonight, and this will get us to the 25th. I don't know, and I don't know if you want to take a risk.
You're gambling.
Yeah, so that just waves the time, that's all, just, thank you so much.
Okay.
So, I'd entertain a motion to continue to the 25th.
So moved.
Second motion to approve by Doc's.
Second by Jim.
Jim?
Yep.
Any questions from the board on the motion to continue, from the audience? Seeing here and none, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We'll see you on the 25th.
All right.
And the 23rd, and most likely the 23rd.
You'll, do you have a little window?
We'll be in 25.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the application for site plan review special permit 042023, 119 Cranberry Highway, map 12.3, parcel 60. It's continued from 121423. The application is to construct the 3,600 square foot garage to be used for storage. Continued?
Yes.
Yes.
We didn't have a stuff rack.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Continued to the 25th?
Yes. I'll so move, good, continue to the 25th.
Motion made, continue to the 25th. Motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to continue to the 25th of January? Hearing and seeing none, requires roll call.
Yes.
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 Jane?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion made second. All who are in favor, say aye. Aye, or opposed, unanimous. Thank you, we are adjourned.